Okay, everybody, we ended with the summer youth curfew. I'm gonna go back and recognize our city manager.
And if it's okay, if you want to move to the items recommended for action, and then when Amelia gets at the end of that, we'll have Amelia do the budget update. She's not in here right now, so.
All right, we'll do items recommended for action.
Thank you.
The first item, A, is the acceptance of the 2024 Department of Motor Vehicles, DMV Traffic Safety Select Enforcement Alcohol Grant. There's two measures, one's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the title of the paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement/Accohol Grant, authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, any discussion among members of council? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes, thank you. All right, we got a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for an alcohol enforcement traffic safety grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item B is the acceptance of the 2024 Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Grant. There's two measures, one's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2024 Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Pedestrian Bicycle Grant, and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, any discussion among members of council? I feel like we should have Barbara Dirk here, but she's not here on this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. All right, we got a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for a pedestrian and bicycle traffic safety grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, thank you. Any discussion among members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. Item C is the acceptance of the 2024 Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Enforcement Traffic Safety Grant. Is there a motion and a budget, but resolution, is there a motion?
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Department of Motor Vehicles Traffic Safety Selective Enforcement Police Traffic Services Grant, and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, any discussion among council members? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, thank you, and the resolution passes. Now, does the budget ordinance?
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for traffic safety, a police traffic services grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among members of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. All right, item D is amendment of the HUD Annual Action Plan. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution approving a proposed amendment to the City of Roanoke's 2023 HUD Annual Plan Update to the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, authorizing the city manager or the city managers designate to execute all necessary documents pertaining thereto, and further authorizing the city manager or the city managers designate to submit such amendment to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for final review and approval.
All right, is there any discussion among council members? All right, Madam Clerk, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes, thank you. Item E is the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Fire Programs for Fiscal Year '24 Funding. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title of the paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Fire Programs FY '24 Funding Grant, and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, is there any discussion among council members? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title of the paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Fire Programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any questions of council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes, thank you. G is an authorization of a request for Virginia Department of Transportation.
I believe we are at F.
F, yes.
F?
Yeah, we had F. Yes.
Request, back to back, F and G are both requests.
Authorization to request transportation.
Let her begin. All right, so F. All right, authorization of request for Virginia Department of Transportation, is item F?
Yes, it is.
All right, requiring sharing funds FY 2027 and 2028. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution supporting an application and authorizing the city manager to submit such application to the Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program in the amount of $10 million for FY 2027 through 2028 for certain projects, and authorizing the city manager to take certain actions in connection with such projects.
All right, any discussion among members of council?
May I just give a real quick overview as to what this is, and then we've got Ian and Ross and Luke here to answer any specific questions about any one of the items that are on here. As you all know, unlike counties, so counties, basically all the streets in counties are actually maintained by VDOT. In municipalities, the vast majority, nearly all the streets, bridges, everything inside the cities are maintained locally. One of the ways in which VDOT has set up a way in which to assist municipalities in that is through a revenue sharing program, and so that's what this is doing, is it's actually seeking funding. They made some changes that are described in the memo for that funding itself. It does require a local match in each of the cases, and there's an explanation in the report regarding each of those matches. This ultimately will be used for curb and gutter projects, as well as street scape projects, as well as stormwater and drainage projects in a number of locations within the city. And again, if folks are interested in seeing that don't have the pack in front of them, folks can look at this online also. It has all of those street, all of those projects that are identified on there. Some of these, I believe, have already been engineered and designed, maybe all of them have been, and all, I'm looking at Luke, say yes, they all have been, okay. So that's just kind of the overview, but if you have specific questions about any one of these, I'm gonna turn to these folks so they can answer those for you.
Mr. Mayor, I do. I have questions, and I had sent them to the manager earlier. My question is with regards to the, I call it Mormon Road, but you have it as Mormon Avenue, for the pedestrian improvements between 10th and 5th Street. Will there be sidewalks on both sides of the streets going from 10th to 5th? I know there is some sidewalk, and there are sidewalks nowhere that leads through there, but along primarily between, I guess, from 10th to 9th to 8th. I think all we got to 7th is where I was really primarily interested in.
Yeah, well, good afternoon, yeah, your question is a good one. There's sporadic sidewalk between that, in that corridor, and what we want to do is make a continuous sidewalk on both sides of the road from 5th Street to 10th Street. But there is a few spots that already do have sidewalk. Either that will be, need to be readjusted to match the new sidewalk, or we'll connect into that sidewalk.
Now, down by 8th Street, going, I guess we would say going east, I guess that's east, there's the embankment, down by the bus stop across from 8th Street Grill, where you have at the corner, there is, they in the grass area where the overgrowth and all of that is, so you're gonna...
You're talking about the north side of the road?
I guess it'd be on the, yes, on the north side, correct.
Yeah, so there's a grass area there, and then we go up the embankment.
And then there's the embankment.
And there's a few of the old style garages that are built into the embankments, yes. So what we plan to do there, we have a schematic where we've laid that out, just to make sure we're not having to acquire right of way into those embankments. So we'll have that sidewalk in that grass swath area, and we'll connect up to where those garages are at. So we've, we've looked at that embankment and made sure that it works.
Now, what about the embankment down by the grocery store as you go around the curve to the yield sign, right before you get to 6th Street? There are some homes there, and they right up, butt up against the street.
Okay.
And there's some, you know, there's an embankment there where you really would be cutting into.
Yeah, either, either we'll move the sidewalk out into the road a little bit more, or we really want to avoid cutting into those embankments, because one, it's typically private property, and the right of way does not go up that.
Right, and that's why I was asking the question, and have you contacted any of the property owners and discussed this with them today?
This, the Mormon project came up through our curb gutter and sidewalk applications. We had a really heavy, a lot of curb gutter and sidewalk applications for that area. So that's really how the project got on our radar. So when we looked at that, we laid it out schematically, just to see how things would fit, and then back in April, we went to a neighborhood meeting and took those schematics. And, because we also want to do some stormwater management, improve some water quality in the area. So a member of my staff in engineering office went to a neighborhood meeting, I believe it was April 24th, and discussed this with the neighborhood representatives that came to the meeting. We also had our stormwater staff there. So we've gotten some preliminary feedback and reached out to folks, but to say we've gone to each individual property owner, we haven't yet.
So that would have been the Loudon Rugby Association?
I'll have to ask you, yeah, I wasn't at that meeting, but Ian and Shaw was.
NNEO and Loudon and Melrose.
Yeah, so the NNEO, you were right with.
So they were the only ones that you spoke with? I mean, that attended, I guess, because I'm thinking about William Billensley, he heads up the Loudon area, along with NNEO, Melrose.
Yeah, and then the NNEO, and they gave us a lot of the, right, because I mean, because it's like, you say, they were the ones who thought about the work, you know.
Okay, well, I would suggest you still reach out to that neighborhood association as well. And the other question I have is, on your stormwater part of the Melrose Avenue Drainage Improvement Crossing, whereabouts on Melrose is that I was looking at your map, but I could not really...
It's right near the Academy, Forest, right there where...
Right, I saw that near Forest Park.
Yes.
Street itself, okay, and now, when do you expect to start that project, and how long will it take to put in?
Okay, good questions. I'm gonna turn it over to Liz Payton and our stormwater.
Oh, okay, okay.
Good afternoon, I'm Elizabeth Payton, CFP Program Manager for Stormwater. So for the Melrose Avenue project, we're currently working on procuring an engineering consulting firm. This is requesting additional funds, so this was previously funded by VDOT Revenue Sharing, and we've just found with the scope and with inflation that we need additional funding. So we've kind of already got the ball rolling on that one, so we're hoping by spring of next year that we'll have, you know, an engineering firm working on those plans. And from that point, it'll probably be another year until maybe construction is starting.
Before they start it. And do you anticipate a long time with, with the street being tore up, that there'll be detours around that for a certain amount of time?
At this point, it's very difficult to estimate anything like that. We'll have to wait for our engineering firm to see the extent of which that we might replace a large culvert, and the methods that would be used to do that, and how that would affect the traffic in the area.
Now, would the replacement be on one side, or is it gonna be in the middle of the street itself since it's four lanes?
It would be crossing the entire.
The whole street?
Street, yeah, so it would definitely cause some impacts in that area.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, I mean, thoroughfare, okay. And I think, let me see if that's all that I had sent on that. I think my other question runs with the Shenandoah Avenue Division Drainage Improvements. Are these also, these improvements from the Shenandoah Avenue along with Jefferson Street, there is an upcoming report under 71H that also talks about Shenandoah improvements, Avenue Division Drainage Improvements, are they somehow connected?
This is the same project, so yes, for the, for the request for funds for 2728, that is similar to the Melrose project. This project has previously been approved, and we have been accepted by VDOTs, but we just want to bolster the amount of funding that we're getting for them, so that's why it's also in this FY 2728 funding cycle. But the upcoming agenda item is about the exact same project. We just have the agreement from already having this project with this.
Right, that's what I thought, okay.
So we just want to get the, that agreement signed, so we can start on engineering procurement.
So it's almost additional funding, is what you're seeking for four years out?
Yeah, so we're ready to sign the agreement and start working on it, but then in the meantime, working to get additional funding from VDOT.
Right, that's what I thought, okay, thank you.
And am I correct, that project is part of our downtown flooding mitigation project? Okay, so if you, if you all remember, gosh, it's been a couple of years, we've talked about all the different steps that need to be taken to start addressing some of the downtown flooding, this is one of those projects associated with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes, all right. Item G is authorization, authorization of a request for Virginia Department of Transportation FY '25 Transportation Alternatives Program Funds. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution supporting an application and authorizing the city manager or his designate to submit an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for FY '25 Transportation Alternatives Program Funds for pedestrian improvements along Salem Turnpike Northwest and West Side Boulevard Northwest, Roanoke, Virginia, and authorizing the city manager or his designate to take certain actions in connection with such application.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Mayor, this is another somewhat similar program, in that it's a partnership with VDOT and also with the U.S. Department of Transportation, where they provide funding to do what they're referred to as transportation alternative programs, which we've used here extensively for sidewalks, parts of greenways, and a whole host of other things. And again, similar to the last item, certainly Luke, I think, is able to answer any specific questions you might have on this one.
All right, Madam Jones, you got a question?
Yes. Mr. Cal, would that include a traffic light over on Salem Turnpike over by Fairview Elementary School?
No, this is only for the sidewalk portion, but I don't even think that traffic lights are eligible for this funding, I don't think.
I can show you the corridor map if you want to see that.
I could ask at a later time, thank you.
Are you done, Mrs. Jones?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, if I could.
All right.
And you may want to pull the map up for me, please, because my question deals with, I know where you're coming from on Salem Turnpike going up to West Side Boulevard, and I wasn't sure how far on West Side you were going to do the sidewalks. I know past apartments going up toward Williams Memorial Cemetery, and I didn't know if it's up to that point or all the way over. I was trying to look at that through the map that you had given us.
So basically, the project... This is Peters Creek Road right here. This is Salem Turnpike. Right now, the sidewalk comes around the curve and stops at the bridge.
Right.
So we would pick up the sidewalk, basically on the other side of the bridge, and then take it down Salem Turnpike. Right now, that's kind of a no man's land, so to say, so to speak, and a lot of people walk through there, especially from the residential area. So we're gonna pick, pick up and put curb and gutter and sidewalk through there, and then we're gonna, and this is West Side Boulevard right here.
Right.
So then we're gonna go up West Side Boulevard.
Is that gonna be on both sides, or just one side?
Just on one side, just on one side. And then we're gonna go up to the apartment complex and, and stop right here.
Oh, okay, so you're stopping before you go past that?
Right, yeah, and then that'll allow us in the future to build on additional phases, but just for this TA application, it stops right at the apartment complex.
Do you have any future plans for West Side Boulevard over, off of Melrose up to Herschberger, where the school is at, where kids walk up?
Uh, not in the foreseeable future, we, we do not have any foreseeable plans.
I was thinking about the safe routes because of the school.
Right, right. That's, that's, that would be a good application to look at.
I think that would be.
Yeah, certainly.
Because the residents and students walk back down to the Shell Station along that whole easy thoroughfare right there, yeah, okay.
Yeah, West Side, it's always interesting when you talk about West Side Boulevard, because it's such a long road.
Yes, it is.
And it's, it, it...
And it weeds because on the other side where the cemetery is at, same thing.
Right.
There is no sidewalks that carry you around there.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah. But no, this application only deals from the bridge up to the apartment complex.
Up to those apartments, okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any more discussion? You ready to vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item H is the acceptance of Virginia Department of Transportation Local Revenue Sharing Funding for Multiple Drainage Improvement Projects. There is two measures, one a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation Local Revenue Sharing Funding for Multiple Drainage Improvement Projects, and authorizing the city manager to execute and file appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, any discussion among council? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes as a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 Stormwater Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion among council members? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item I is the acceptance and appropriation of additional funding from George Mason University for the Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of additional funds from George Mason University, authorizing the execution of necessary documents upon certain terms and conditions, and authorizing the city manager or his designate to take such further action as may be necessary.
All right, any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. A budget ordinance, no budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance, amending budget ordinance number 42724-082123 to appropriate additional funding from George Mason University for the Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 Grant Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. I'm pleased to recognize the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think at this time we'll have Amelia do the quick update on the monthly budget report for August.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and members of city council. I promise I won't keep you any longer than about an hour on these three slides. But coming before you today, just to present the financial report for month in August, and want to just stress to you that in the month of July and in the month of August, we are in a period of transition, where we are accruing revenues and expenditures back to the prior year. So these numbers are not static. The month of August is not closed, and these numbers will change as we continue forward with closing out the prior fiscal year and then closing out the current month of August. The financial report, of course, is impacted by those accruals that I just spoke of, and we are still engaged in the process of closing out the fiscal year, so the numbers that we're about to talk about are skewed by that process. In summary, what I can report to you is that today we see no areas of concern, and that we are not going to reflect any of those in the highlights today, and are reporting just on the status based on the reports that we were able to use from earlier last week. The first area that we'll look at are our revenues for the month of August, at the At the end of August, per last week's reports, which has not been closed or finalized, as I stated, we note that the collection of revenue is at 4.9% of that revenue budget that we have. Again, that's due to various collection dates that we have for all of our various revenues. When we look at ones such as real estate, which is our largest local tax that we collect, and by the way, is due October the 5th, we should expect to see, of course, that percentage grow by a great amount. So that percentage of 4.9% is not alarming in any way. As further accruals occur back into fiscal 2023 in areas such as consumer utility, transient occupancy, and prepared food and beverage, as well as changes that we've seen in the posting of revenues due to the implementation of the PCI system, this percentage will again shift. So as we come back to you with month end September, you will see our figures that we will use for September. They will have normalized. And you'll see those comparisons with the prior September month end be a little more similar. Again, with the exception of PCI having been implemented. And we'll be able to explain those at that time. Would like to just share with you also our revenue analyst, Jason Cromer. He is monitoring our revenues on a daily basis and working with our treasurer's office, working with our accounting group to ensure that we are watching all of our, especially our large-scale revenues to ensure that we are not missing anything and having discussions across the organization with departments that are generating those revenues to understand what we're seeing compared also with the expense monitoring that is occurring in management and budget. So I'm going to pause right there for any revenue questions that you may have. Okay?
Okay, no questions.
If not, we'll move to the expense side. As we, as we review the expenditures, we see a year-over-year increase, as you see noted here, within the first two months. We're not surprised to see that, as you know, we have some compensation increases that we were expecting to see the expenditures increase due to not only just compensation, but also the retirement rate that we increased. So that is no surprise. Again, those variances are going to start to decrease as we pull the expenditures back into the prior fiscal year as well. Similar to that revenue review, as we come back to you with September, you're going to see those percentages and numbers fluctuate again because that process has to complete itself. Again, no highlights here in terms of any issues that we see. But if there are any reasons that you have questions, I'll pause for those. Okay? As we move forward, the Department of Finance continues with monitoring these on a monthly basis as we close those months in the midst of the audit, both on the revenue and on the expense side. And budget analysts are continuing to meet consistently with departmental representatives to be aware of any issues that may arise and to craft plans for how we're going to address those, should that be necessary. We'll come back to you on October 16th with the September update.
Thank you for the updates, Mayor.
And it was less than an hour.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, where are we, Madam Clerk?
We are now at 72A.
All right, the amendment of the city code?
Yes.
Okay. Chapter 20, Motor Vehicles and Traffic. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic to add a new section 20-69, prohibited activities on public roadways with medians. Division 1, generally, Article 4, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended, providing for an effective date and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Item B is amendment of the city code, code enforcement, Chapter 7, Chapter 20, and Chapter 33. We've got three measures, all ordinances. I need a motion on ordinance number one.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 7 Building Regulations by the addition of new Article 4 Vacant Building Registration and new Article 5 Derelict Building Program, Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any discussion, my council members? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. I need a motion on ordinance two.
To move, second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4 Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 4 Removal of Hazardous and Illegal Parked Vehicles, Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any discussion, my council? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. I need a motion on ordinance number three.
To move, second.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 33 Vegetation and Trash, Article 2 Weed and Trash Abatement, Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any discussion among council members? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item C is an amendment of the city code, Chapter 2, Section 2-305, Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining Section 2-305 Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, Division 2 Permanent Committees, Article 14 Authorities, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Generally, Chapter 2 Administration, Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, establishing an effective date and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion among members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, and we now move to item number eight, the reports of committees. A Republic of Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriations of funds for various educational programs and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donald Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is the spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023-2024 school grant fund appropriations and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion among members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. B2 is a report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions which city council serves as liaisons or appointees. Is there any comments by the council in this area? All right, hurrying now. We're going to go to item number nine, which is unfinished business. We have none. All right, item number 10 is the introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. And this will be a walk-on item from Mr. Spencer to amend a resolution 42529-010323, establishing a meeting schedule for city council commencing January 1st, 2023, and terminating December 31st, 2023. And I'm going to call on Mr. Spencer for.
Just quickly, it's whether council wishes to do this. If so, we will have the resolution present. What happened, and I don't know if you all heard from Clerk, but VML moved its meeting. So the fifth was originally set and has been advertised, and a number of people are coming on October 5th. That's what was approved. If council wishes to move it back to the original date of October 2nd, I can have the resolution available this evening. But if I haven't heard council say we need to move that because VML moved its meeting, everyone can still attend VML. We don't need to move our council meeting. But we've already approved that as we did back in January. Because in January, that's when VML said there would be a meeting, but they've moved since. So if we want to keep everything the same and you'd like to have everyone here on the 5th, then we just, we don't need to do anything. Otherwise, I can have a resolution ready for your consideration at this evening's meeting.
VML moved their meeting?
Yes. They moved it from when they initially told the city and our clerk's office when that meeting was supposed to be extended.
Okay. So instead of the seven, is that the conference?
Yes, the conference starts the weekend.
As opposed to typically starting the weekend before and then we'd move the meeting. So when we, we based our annual calendar in January on that. They've moved it to the next week, which means we could have held our meeting on the 2nd when normal. However, we adopted it on October 5th. So we can continue to meet October 5th. And I think a number of people have built their schedules around that. And then our first meeting will be October 5th. But if council wants to move it back to the 2nd, I'll have a resolution ready for you to amend that original resolution setting the meeting. Then we'll post it on the outside in accordance with our city code.
All right.
So what does council wish? Does council find with October 5th as previously approved?
I don't have a problem with October. What's the pleasure, council?
From looks of everything, everyone's fine with what we had planned back in January.
Yeah.
And that'll be the easiest way.
There is no need to kill the tree.
Excuse me?
There is no need to kill the tree.
Thank you.
What was that?
Don't have to kill the tree because you know the lawyer's going to have to have at least nine copies.
And then you gotta advertise.
Okay.
Save them up.
So we will keep our council meeting as scheduled in the January meeting for October 5th.
All right. Do we, we don't need to adopt the.
Don't need to consider anything.
All right.
Good to go.
All right, we'll go to item number 11 then. Is motions and miscellaneous business inquiries or comments by the mayor and members of city council? Any inquiries? I had to go attend. How did the Henry Street Festival, how did that go this year? I didn't have a chance to attend.
It was well attended for what I said earlier today.
How about the show at night? Why, everybody shook their head. No, they didn't do that. Oh, all right. Okay, well, that's, any inquiries or comments? All hearing none. Vegas is on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. We have none. All right, so it's about 5:41. We're going to go in recess until 7 o'clock here, back here in the council chamber. So council stands in recess. We have one.